Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Mark VII, 2022 Bryant Council Meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First on the agenda is approved amendments of the February 21st meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is hearing public concerns. If you would, please state your name.
My name is Scott Vard, and I thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns at your meeting. I have read in the Bryant Times two articles on food truck rules being considered by the city of Brian. My question to Mayor Kerry Strayed and City Council is why has this become an issue for the city of Brian? Why? Why? Have food trucks been showing up at the park and taking away business from baseball or softball associations in the past? Not that I'm aware of. And if a food truck did show up, isn't it fair competition, giving the consumer an option on food choices? Of course it is. This is the world we live in today. Food choices, free opportunity, the American enterprise system we live by and we hold true in Brian, Ohio, for sure. I'm also here in support of my son Austin and his business, Good Neighbor BBQ. He has worked very hard establishing his business since the fall of 2021 and has developed a good customer following. A lot of people like his product, and we need more people like that to support Brian. So my simple request this evening to City Council is to support food trucks and not pass any further legislation on this topic. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay. Item number three is a resolution. Lawyers, please number read.
Resolution number seventeen, 2022, a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police for the City of Brian to apply for grants for the city of Brian.
Evening. Good evening.
Evening.
So we have a bulletproof vest grant program through law enforcement we need to apply for basically every year. It's revolving grant. Essentially, you apply for it, they reimburse you seventy-five percent of the total cost of the grant. Saves us about, I think, thirteen hundred dollars overall per officer when it comes to the grant. But again, it's a, you have to pay upfront, you get the reimbursement after.
I move to suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I guess I have one more to go along with that. If we can, I don't know, skip the formality or prove it now to where, when I do need to apply for that, I can purchase it and then just submit the paperwork to be reimbursed for the seventy-five percent.
I don't think that they need council action for this because it's under the existing house.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a resolution. Lawyers, please number read.
Resolution number eighteen, 2022, a resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2022 Noble Drive and Pleasantwood Avenue Improvements.
So what we're doing here is Noble Drive, it, it went to heck over the winter. There's a lot of spots down there in the low end, and it's really bad. Now, we're not going to do a full depth removal, we're not doing curb and gutter and all that. We're going to mill out about four inches of asphalt, put four inches back in of good base, and do just a little bit of grading, move a couple of catch basins that are real close to the edge of the road. And Pleasantwood Avenue, it's the last block in that neighborhood, it's between Avenue A and Oxford, and we've actually got, I don't want to say sinkhole, but we've got a low spot along the side of the road, about thirty foot long, and the water stand's probably three inches deep in there, just something settled underneath there. So we're going to go in and redo that particular block, and there's only two driveways affected there, so it won't be as bad as the other projects, but we're estimating around two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand total for both of these. So with that, I would request you suspend the rules and authorize me to advertise for bids.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Next on the agenda is ordinance. Lawyers, please number read.
Ordinance number ten, 2022, an ordinance to amend Brian Municipal Code, Section 773 of the City of Brian codified ordinances pertaining to temporary stores and transient dealers and adding regulations pertaining to food trucks and rescinding any section inconsistent therewith.
Counsel, this is the third reading, so you can have discussion, and then motion to approve or no.
I would like to ask Mr. Vard, is there something specific in this that bothers you, that you're concerned with?
Sure, absolutely. I guess I was just surprised it started to begin with. Why? That's what I was trying to make a point. Sometimes I try to get right to the point, I can talk for ten minutes or three minutes, right to the point. Why? Why did it pop up this year? I mean, I see, you know, occasional food trucks, you know, of course, we have the great Jubilee, we had the day in the park, the nice amphitheater with events last year, and I could have gone into more detail and said, oh, by the way, you're also going to charge people, you know, a license. I saw some conversation in Bryant Times about even money back and forth, that's good conversation, but to me, you're creating something that's not an issue. You're saying, just in case, just in case, let's do it. It's like you want to penalize, and I wish other food truck operators would be here to, you know, to support them, but I finally felt after reading the Bryant Times, and I waited and I waited, and I thought, well, hopefully that'll not be the point where I have to come and talk to City Council, but I just felt compelled, a lot of prayer, just a lot of thought went into it. I said, I just got to say something, I've got to watch my opinion, what I feel from my heart, and I just think it doesn't have to go any further, I just don't, I just don't, I just don't get it. I just don't get it.
May I address the part on how it started? There were a couple conversations over the last year from food truck owners that wanted to park in the parallel parking along Main and High, and those parking spaces are pretty narrow for a food truck, and so wanted to talk about safety there. We also have a long practice and an ordinance that was passed years ago for solicitation, say a local business wants to go and solicit door-to-door for windows, and that creates a background process and a permit, and the permit for the nonprofits was the same amount that that permit for those individuals were in the city, so there was some consistency there. It wasn't just a number we threw out. But then we also had a couple people call and say, hey, I'm going to create a food truck, and I'm going to build one, and I need to know what the regulations are, and at that point, I addressed council and said, you know, we don't really have any rules, which was basically the birth of this ordinance, and they've taken the last several meetings to kind of tweak it in a way that they thought would work for the community as a whole. So that's why it started, it was mostly requests coming to my office for, what are your regulations? A lot of cities do regulate in some capacity, and we were trying to find the fairest way to do that for all.
Can you give me some examples of cities that regulate, and are they doing it defiance?
Yeah, they are, and actually, there is a local business owner that set up a food lot truck, because quite frankly, when they were talking about expanding their Dora in defiance, they wanted to extend it all the way down there. Now, I can't remember what their council decided, but I know that that was a big conversation, and it was where the old, I don't know if you're familiar, but Peppermint Patties across from the Washingtonville, that parking lot is now a food truck alley, they call it, and so they have a spot. We also, in this new legislation, identified some city lots that would be available for people to park their food trucks in from, I think, seven AM to two AM, like, we were pretty wide on that. And again, with the Jubilee, I know with that, the chamber charges people space based on cubic feet, so the fifty dollars isn't even that big of a deal in comparison to what they, they charge for food trucks to enter for Jubilee days.
And the fifty dollars is an annual fee?
Yes, it's an annual fee, not every time you set up, it's once a year. Again, for, for the nonprofits, it's twenty-five, for things like Kiwanis that aren't really preparing food, they've got the popcorn, like, that's, that's a waived fee, and those happen as well for.
I can see charging fees, I mean, like, if you have food operation, you know, a license, food operates, my son's gone through the other food operations, it's common practice, you know, good health practices, which I would anybody support, if you're on the Jubilee, if you're charged a fee, that makes sense too, but you're going to charge an additional fee on top of the fee, they've already been charged other fees, so you're going to add another fee on, I mean.
Yes and no, a lot of the food truck operators for the Jubilee are also day in the park and blend into the amphitheater, so a lot of the food truck operators are, usually, they're going to pay one fee and that's it, because they're reoccurring in the city for events.
I know some of the food truck operators reached out to me. My first question back to them was, do you go to defiance in Napoleon, do they have permits? And they said, yes. And I said, so I have, I don't have a problem with the permit, but what the food truck owners came back with me was, why do I have to have a background check done? If I were to open a storefront in Brian, I wouldn't have to have a background check done. I have to agree with them on that. They also said, well, do my employees have to have a background check, or is it just me? And I said, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I think it's just you. And they said, well, if it's in my employees, what if my employee calls in sick, and then I've got to find somebody, but I don't have a background check on that person, what am I going to do, shut my truck down for the day? And I said, I don't know, I don't have a problem with the permit part, but the background I do have an issue with, because I think we're, defiance doesn't do a background check, and as far as I know, Napoleon doesn't either, and there are neighboring communities, we're competing with them anyways, and then by adding this background check, we're making it harder for ourselves.
Well, and I think I have two points to that, one is, that would have been nice to know when the city attorney emailed this to all you individually and asked for edits. I don't.
Right, but I knew we wanted to discuss it, so.
Well, but we're on a final reading, so the discussion was the last two readings, we can't edit anything now. But the other problem, I can't, I don't know whether Napoleon does it, again, that came from our original solicitor permit that City Council passed years ago for the background check piece, again, because of the transient nature of food trucks and door-to-door salesmen. With that being said, it was not for the employees, it was for the actual vendor that got the permit.
So what's the difference between the owner and an employee, then? If there's a background checked on, if you're going to do the owner, wouldn't you do the employee too?
Employers do their own background checks in most cases, so that onus would be on the employer.
So Pence's runs background checks on all their employees?
I'd have to assume.
I mean.
I mean, we're the city, so, I mean, you have to assume that they would do that. Otherwise, we legislate everything, and that becomes cumbersome.
I think the overall point, Scott, and I appreciate you coming, I do, and your thoughts, I think the overall piece was, when I heard you first talk, it sounded like it was unnecessary legislation. I think what we tried to do over the last three readings was to strike a balance. What's the balance? What's the fairest way? It was not to make it, at least I didn't sense it was ever, to make it so that it was very cumbersome and difficult for the people that were doing the, working the truck, food trucks. It was to make sure that there was a balance between fairness and, quite frankly, legal issues, that we made sure that it was a level playing field, and also, the city was not in jeopardy. So it was kind of a balance, I think that was a piece that I just want to add.
And I could tag on to what Mary said, and I could say, I mean, if you bring that up, these are good opening things we need to talk about. You know, whatever you decide to do, if you're not sure, you can wait, it's nothing, I mean, you always want to make a good decision, don't make a decision just because you have to make a decision. Make a good decision, make a good decision. But I would also say, I think about the Jubilee, I go to the Jubilee, and I could sit there, and I, and I, you know, I love a lot of people, and I could say, I go to the Jubilee, and I could say, well, you know, I could do it for the Jubilee for the five days, you're not going to do any, what you said, you're not going to pick up that, I could, I could, you know, go on that topic. You've got to have consistency, and I don't think you should do that either. Personally, I don't. I, I mean, I just don't, I just don't, so, I appreciate opportunity to state my thoughts, I, I think there's some good thoughts behind it, but I think some of the things that are going to be brought up now, and sometimes you get, you bring things up later, you can bring things up later, it's okay to take a step back and say, let's, let's think about this again, let's, let's just wait a little longer, let's gather some information that didn't come out earlier, let's think about it. So what I would ask you to do is think about it, for the decision, take a pause and think about it, so I can say.
One of the reasons we did this in three readings was because we wanted input from a lot of the food truck people to come. I haven't had one single person contact me, not one, so I'm assuming everything that we went along with was fine until you stepped up, and this is our last reading tonight, so I kind of wish you would have come when you first had that inkling.
Well, sorry, I didn't, I didn't know there was even a first reading, so I could have gone to the second reading, I didn't know there was first reading, so I had a two-week window, I missed the second window, but I came at the third window, so first one, I had no clue, it was in the Bryant Times, and that's how I found out, so. If I didn't know at the first reading, I might have probably come in the first reading, but I didn't know until after the fact, so that's why I can state in my, in my defense.
Which is also why I asked council to do three readings on this, because I knew it was something that we should, and honestly, they agreed and involved the public in, in the comments on that other reading.
People, unfortunately, we live, we live in a very busy world, we're so busy, and sometimes people just don't take the time to take a, take a step back and give input that they should, and so it's good to get input later than, you know, not at all, and just say, take the information and, you know, just let that settle in and see what you decide to do, but I respect what you decide to do, because you're, this is Brian here, but I'm just saying, I can only state my case and let you ponder that and decide what to do, so I can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm moving to approve the third reading.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
No, because of the background check.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
No, it was, you don't have to suspend because you went through the three readings, so it was approved.
Next on the agenda is a 2021 annual report for the police. I think I've got this condensed down to about a two-hour presentation, so. What you have before you is the 2021 annual report for the Bryant Police Department. Obviously, this was prepared by Executive Secretary Moore, so I want to thank her for that. Several changes throughout the department, I'm just going to do a brief overview of where we're at for a snapshot of 2021, you guys can follow along. We had two-hundred-and-forty-eight car crashes investigated, six-hundred-and-eighty-two citations, and just over a thousand traffic warnings.
Sorry.
Is that?
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. If you want to skip ahead.
You want me to go?
Yep. Flow chart of the office shows. So for personnel changes, we had four full-time patrolmen hired, Patrolman Campbell, Amador, and then we also had Sergeant Hammond was promoted from patrolman to sergeant, he took over at the end of last year for the chief position. We did put on one new SRO, Adam Wheeler is out to the schools now, we had one full-time dispatcher as well. This is just breakdown of where we're at, we do have a captain that's supposed to be sworn in the seventeenth of this month, he will start on the twenty-first or the twenty-second.
And we had a new patrolman hired today.
Yes. Stephen Graziani was sworn in this morning, so he's going to do great things for the city. Again, due to lack of staffing, we do not currently have a relations officer for the city. Their job in the past was bicycle safety laws, proper equipment, industry and trade show, and then they would also partake in the safety council, street signs, stranger danger, grants, and seatbelt safety. As noted, Facebook is doing great things for us, we do have an increase of over four-hundred people, we currently have eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine followers on our Facebook page, Twitter account, fourteen eighty-four, and again, we do have the www.cityofbrian.com police department webpage. Sergeant Beers compiled the bike patrol statistics, we have twenty-nine hours, one-hundred-and-seven miles ridden, five complaints handled, seven assists, four criminal warnings, two traffic citations, two-point-two-five community relation hours, and eight and a half hours of selective enforcement. Currently on the bike, we have Sergeant Beers, Patrolman Williamson, Stephen Doctor, and Patrolman Soff. Michael Elkins is the chaplain for the office, he does a great deal of things, comes in, has a conversation with the officers, anytime we need him, if we have a death in the community and family needs somebody, we call him, and he's, he's an awesome resource in the office. As far as contracts, we are in with Owens Community College for their continuing education, that's a very valuable asset, we pay roughly, I think it's four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, it's a one-time fee, and we can send all the officers to tons of training down there, it's about the best deal we get each year. As you can see, last year, we had over five-hundred-and-sixty-eight hours of training in various topics from BAC, TASER, use of force, legal updates, K-9, and crisis intervention training. That doubled more than from 2020 due to the pandemic, where a lot of classes, in-house classes were suspended, we had to go to webinar-based training. Available online free computer-based training is through EOPADA, that's the Electronic Ohio Police Officer Training Academy for the officers. Several of the CPT mandates for this year will be able to complete through that portal. Police cars, we currently have nine marked patrol vehicles, two unmarked detective cars, one captain car, and one unmarked chief. The total maintenance cost was over twenty-one thousand for the fleet, used just under nine-thousand gallons of fuel, for a total cost of twenty-three thousand two hundred and eight. Our calls for dispatch, I mean, they're, they're hit pretty much consistently over the years, last year was eighteen fifty-three, radio calls was forty-four thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-four, and phone calls was forty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five. So traffic citations, including OBI's for adults and juveniles, last year, we wrote a total of six-hundred-and-eighty-two accidents investigated, we had twenty-four injury, two-hundred-and-twenty-four non-injury, for a total of two forty-eight, and parking tickets, we ended up with sixty. As far as the BAC, we are the only BAC location in the county, if I'm not mistaken, we have a total of a hundred-and-thirty tests were taken using the data master of those tests, fifty-two were administered by the officers at the police department. With COVID restrictions being lifted, Brian offers a solid thirty percent increase in OBI arrests from last year. The pie chart here shows that we had the largest number with thirty-four for ours, followed by OSP with fifteen, I believe the sheriff's office was six, and other departments was seven. The K-9 stats, as provided by Officer Sammons, him and Tyson are doing great things. Tyson's been out with a back leg injury, but he's back to work now, so we're happy to have him back. They had five arrests, two assists with other agencies for K-9 demos, two heroin narcotics fines, eight of five positive narcotics sniffs, three, three uses of found paraphernalia, three unidentified pills, he was used for crowd control, he did two building searches, and a total of three tracks. As I mentioned earlier, we have Stan Nyheart and Adam Wheeler continue to be valuable school resource officers out on the city schools. And then we also have Cliff Wagle, obviously, who's been equally valuable as a code enforcement officer, cleaning up the property and junk vehicles around the city. And again, just a overall graph chart for calls for service, 2020, we had seventy-four, eighty-three, last year, we had eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-four. Just again, another, another chart, it shows that Wednesday is actually, for whatever reason, taken over as the busiest day of the week. Normally, the busiest hours are three to five.
Any questions for Chief Reston?
I don't, I certainly appreciate it, it's, though the numbers were pretty much the same as up there, it was a little difficult for me, because it was, was there a difference in what this was and what we received, has it related? I mean, it was not the same format, which is fine, I mean, if I can't follow a different format, that's just sad.
No, I believe everything was pretty much the same, it's just got switched up differently for the size of slideshow.
Okay, yeah, it was, yeah, that made it a little, yeah, no, I appreciate that, the numbers look. The numbers look the same to me, which is the critical piece, and I certainly appreciate that, Chief, thank you.
I think Christie had some more broken down information too in your report.
Well, he had some information on there that I liked, that wasn't here.
And again, that was all stuff, yeah, she, she completed it, I was just trying to condense it down, save some time, I know you guys had had these for a little while now, so wasn't sure if you had any questions for me.
I'm good.
Just so you know where we're headed, you know, I intend to get a detective going here close to the end of March. As soon as we get Graziani through his FTO, we'll, we'll be moving back into the position of having one detective and hopefully another one by the end of the year. All right.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 2022 State of the City.
Good evening, everyone. Again, we have the flow chart, chart that we list for you with Mayor, Council, BPA, and then how that floats down. You'll notice recycling is under streets, and park does have two boards that sit underneath them, and then the zoning administrator is under engineering. We did really well with the carryover of 2. almost $4 million last year. Total budget for the city was $29,207,962. I always say that wrong, and then BPA was $30 million, $26,264. I will remind all of you, our carryover and budget was a little lower for 2020. As far as what we actually spent because of the pandemic, there was a freeze put on, on anything that was not necessary. We're still conservative in 2021, but again, with that carryover, I think we've done a good job physically, both with city management and BMU management, but also with city council and Board of Public Affairs. And as we were talking before the meeting with the term endemic for, for COVID floating around, I'm really grateful for all of you that we got through the last two years in the manner in which we did, I'm proud of all the employees, I think everybody rose to the occasion in an unprecedented time, so thank you for your help with that. As far as general fund, our biggest budget is the police department at 2.1 million, second to municipal court. All of those are in there as well, cemetery being the smallest. As far as the city portion of taxes, we did collect over $7 million for that, the rest of it goes to fire, 1% is on income tax, and then half percent goes to street and sewers. I want to talk a little bit about that half percent, that it was established in 1994, and since then, the city has been able to apply over $40 million in funds to repair and replace streets and sewers. Of that $40 million, 7.3 was just in the asphalt program alone. Approximately $4.9 million has been given in grants, funding that was received that the half percent has leveraged funds for. It's also important to note, because of this half percent income tax, the city is very competitive in the grant processes, as most applications through the state, Montney Valley, et cetera, require significant local matching dollars, so that definitely is setting that half percent on for streets and sewers. Again, with the inside property tax, I know when people go and pay their real estate taxes to the, to the county, they think the city gets a lot of money for that, but it was a little over $400,000 for real estate tax. The city employees, that hasn't changed much as far as number of employees, we've stayed pretty steady on that, as far as full-time employees go. Bryan Economic Growth Council Executive Committee, those are the people that serve for any of those economic growth meetings, especially when we have to engage for the South Industrial Park lot sales. These are today, the available acreage out at that industrial park on Wilson Street, which we internally call the South Park. And then also, we still have, which is apparently on this paper, the Industrial Park North. Projects for 2020, again, we're working on that burn building rebuild, I think we're in the final stages of getting that ready. Planning and zoning code updates, that was slowed again by the pandemic in being able to meet with the outside consultants, so Andy and Brian are in the final stages of that. After they've cleaned that up, it will go through legal, and then we will go through planning and zoning, and then council for you guys to look through. The cremation niches out of the cemetery have been installed. I believe we've got some landscaping conversations for the spring, yes, so keep an eye on that. For paving program, there's 586,000 budgeted from the engineering department that will go into the central business district. Sanitary sewer replacement, again, that was the $2.1 million grant funds that we were able to procure for also Avenue B area. And then there was a imagination station restroom remodel, and some dealing with the flooding issues that were out there by that restroom as well. So hopefully, when the fountain gets turned on and we're using the amplifier that restroom, and then the flooding will be complete. And then for wastewater, we have that big dewatering improvement project going and, and starting on that. And this is the picture of the Industrial Park North. This is a state authenticated site, it is obviously advertised on our website, and RGP. Also, AMP will put it in their pamphlet and, and news releases at times. I know that it's frustrating for everyone, including us, that we have not secured a business for that, but I will tell you that we have looked and signed several NVNAs and had those conversations, and have been chasing business at every opportunity, and are still doing so. So this isn't something we're just waiting for someone to come to us, we get, we get leads quite often, and we work together with engineering and BMU, and we do our best over here to try to get an attractive business in Bryan. Does anyone have any questions? No?
Ready to go?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I guess this time we'll go around the room. Lori? Brian? Chief?
I would just like to say, as we get the spring ready, please do not burn any leaves in the recycling center in the city, or give them to the disposal, don't burn them.
Thank you. Chief?
No.
Tyson? Ben? Wes? Okay. So with Mary today.
I'm just gonna thank all the department heads for their annual reports, thank you, we do appreciate them, and have a good evening.
John?
Yeah, I have four quick ones. One, I want to thank, I want to thank the chief and mayor for their informative reports and all the quality service they and their staff provide. Second thing I'd like to state is that Bryan is blessed to have a hospital with quality, dedicated staff. They deserve our respect and admiration. Please remember, as with all of our first responders, they are there helping us in times of our greatest need. A third thing I'd like to do is, is say that I've had a number of people talk to me about what's going on with the city trash. I think it's been very, very helpful, no one's been out of control, everyone's been very, very polite, it's just more a question of why, what's happening, what kind of a thing. So, what, what I would suggest and like to see, and is, is that we have a, on April the 4th, I believe, is the council meeting where we're going to be discussing before the final vote on 4/18. So on 4/4, I would like to invite any of the public that have interesting questions. At that point in time, certainly Tyson can be available, the mayor, city clerk, in terms of what's going on, why, as well as city council, to be able to answer those questions in some kind of a quick public forum education piece. So if, I, I would like to make sure that people are invited on April 4th to be able to share any of their concerns, questions. I've answered a number of them, I think to the, to their satisfaction, but you can tell by the question, the reflection of the understanding. Always have been able to, always will be able to. So when someone is asking you those kind of questions, they're very good questions that need to be addressed before we kind of march on. And some of those, just as a example, would be for Tyson, the mayor, Lori, et cetera, and us, is, you know, what are some of the increased expenses on the dumping fees, the labor shortage issues, cost of the vehicles increasing, how it distracts from our street work currently, and how that's gonna help? Any shift, there's been a number of people, are we gonna lay off people? Just a, a number of questions that I think this could help, this forum could help address. And I think also explaining some of the cost savings, at that point, we can have the bids and understand what we're looking at, and have a general understanding as to what this is going to do for the city on a cost basis. And then also explain the options for all trash pickup, which I think we all anticipated was gonna be a question, what, how's that gonna be handled, and what are we gonna do? So those are some of the questions I think that we can address on April the 4th. We'll repeat what Judy said, for those who don't come and don't share, on April 18th, there will be a final vote. So I would highly recommend that if you have questions, you can contact certainly any of the city council, or the mayor, or anyone, but April 4th would be a good time to come. Fourth and final, I've had a number of constituents reach out also and ask, is it possible, and this is for council, is it possible for us on, I believe it's four dates, did we look at four, four dates, where the BPA and?
Five.
Five? Five dates a year, BPA meets at the same time as city council. And they were wondering if on those dates, could city council meet later so they could either attend or watch on BMU both, both events? And I said, well, you know, it's taped, sometimes you can watch the tape, but I do want to at least express that concern, and in what council would think of that as an option for five dates, maybe meeting at like seven or something, or whether, I look at you when I say seven. At seven, we used to meet at like seven o'clock or something. And that's right now for a kind of a discussion, kind of a thoughts, if you have any thoughts.
I have to see the dates.
Yeah, I, I have them, do you want to wait till you guys finish going around the room, and I can?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, too, sure. That, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Judy?
Yes, I'd also like to say thank you to Carrie and Greg for their reports. I would also like to say thank you to Mr. Bard for coming and giving us his input. It's always good to hear from the voters and what they feel. Also, I would like to thank all the supervisors that apply for grants. You save this city a lot of money by doing that, and we appreciate it very much, thank you.
I too want to thank Scott Bard for expressing his concerns. I, I just feel like as a, a council as a whole, we really don't want to discourage the, the food trucks, that was why I was wondering what his concerns were, because that's not our intent, is, is to discourage, but rather encourage, but within some guidelines. I do want to thank Chief Ruskey for his presentation, I've got to tell you, you were talking about Matt, Sammons, and Tyson, and the great things that they're doing, and I'm going, oh, what's Angstrom doing with Matt? Until you mentioned that his hind legs had been injured, I'm not figuring out.
Well, we have a mayor's favorite Tyson, and then, no, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Some say that Tyson's smarter than one of the other Tyson's, but I, I won't say which.
So anyway, and don't forget the spring forward, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor?
Okay, to button up a couple of the things that Mr. Betts spoke about, in Bryan and Tyson and Lori, since you guys are more active in bid processes, if I get anything wrong, please come to the microphone and correct me. But, the bid specs have already been written, that was done through administrative meetings within the city with legal, clerk, engineering, and street department, and myself. So once those come back, there's not a lot of changes, well, there's no changes we can make to the bid specs, or the bids are just, they have to be thrown out. So some of those, you know, conversations on what we can handle for all trash and when, were things that we had to make kind of on an administrative level before those bids went out on what we could handle and what we couldn't. Those bids will be opened and available by that April 4th council meeting, which is why when Mr. Betts asked, you know, how do we get the public aware of that, that April 4th meeting, is when those will be given to you guys to review. You can certainly just have a first reading on that, but they would have to be passed or thrown out by April 18th meeting, because we have a 30-day requirement in order to accept or reject all bids. As far as the dates that conflict on those Tuesdays, those are holidays, so the first one was Martin Luther King Day, which we've already passed. The next one will be Juneteenth, because that is a Monday, well, it's a Sunday, observed on a Monday, so June 21st. The next one is the 4th of July, so July 5th. Next is September 5th, which would be the day after Labor Day, actually, that's September 6th, I apologize, and then that October Ready Set Relax, that meeting would be Tuesday, October 4th. So the suggestion was, in order for BMU to record that meeting, that council move their meetings back to seven, because BPA will be at five. I did talk to Nate Gardner, because actually, Mr. Betts asked me about this at the last meeting, so I had some homework to do, and also Chris Bryce, and they all agreed that it was doable for them at seven, as long as the BPA meeting was over in time, which typically they, they are, finished in an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes. So, something you guys, if you want to go and check your calendars, if you don't write those down, and you need me to text those dates to you throughout the week, let me know. Or you can motion tonight, or you can ask me to add it to the agenda for the next meeting to discuss whatever, whatever your pleasure is.
Let's do it the next meeting, it gives everyone time to look at it and get some thought to it.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yep, perfect.
Also, I'd like to thank you for not having any questions after the State of the City, our boys knew this.
I'd also like to thank Scott Bard for coming up and giving his comments and concerns, I guess, at this point, and thank the mayor and Chief Ruskey for your, your own reports. This time, we're gonna take a brief recess and go into executive session to discuss acquisition of property.
Thank you.